Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Select Force Meeting. Would you please join? Joining the Plaid Allegiance by standing.
Plaid Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to take this time to welcome everybody. And again, as a reminder, if you're not on a emergency call, please put your phones in a suspended position. Tonight, under appointments, I have the honor to introduce Mr. Ted Gassus, our new representative to the Executive Council. Mr. Gassus, please.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the council. As I told you last time I was here that if I was fortunate enough to be elected, I'd be back to give you my cards so that if you need anything here in Barrington, feel free to call and I certainly would come back and see what I can do to help you out. And with that, I'd open it up to any questions that anybody might have.
Anybody in the board have any questions? Anybody in the public have any questions, Mr. Gassus? Boy, that's a pity. I will say this, I'm glad you came back.
Welcome, welcome.
And I really hope you enjoy it. I hope you come back and see us again.
I will be back.
And if there's anything we can do for you likewise, please let us know.
In two years, you'll be hearing from.
Well, good.
One thing.
Yes.
Your predecessor regularly had the secretary send out a summary of the meeting. I assume that something like that can be used.
We didn't do that on a quarterly basis, yes.
That was useful.
Again, thank you very much for coming. I really appreciate it.
Don't mind, I'll pass out the cards to the Plaid.
Please.
Thanks for coming.
My pleasure.
Moving on, we have the budget section of our meeting. Peter, do you have your presentation for us? I see you're.
Hey, you can either take the podium or sit here at the table, whichever works out over here. Thanks.
Fighting with the chair.
It's okay.
Do you have a copy of this presentation? You want to get it later?
Peter, did you have something to hand out to the board or?
Did you or did you not get a copy of my minutes from our meeting on Wednesday?
I can make copies.
They were four days, but I can make copies.
You can make copies of the minutes.
I just want to make sure that anything else I hand out?
No.
Oh, okay.
Take one, Connor.
Yeah, I'd like one, two, because I have to write on them. Nothing bad ever, Peter.
That's okay.
I'd stand behind you with a.
You say wrong.
Nothing is involved, huh?
Again, I think any comments that I have have to be with the sort of the reservation that if you do move forward with items that we haven't seen yet, which happened last year, I'm hoping you understand if we then take another look and maybe revise our position on the budget in general. Tracy looks confused, but last year, last year, the TD building came up kind of after we were done. And we didn't like that approach and certainly took exception to it. So again, if that happens this year, again, we would then meet again and formulate a new position on the budget at large.
I think there's definitely transparency with what.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Did.
Reasonably said.
Yes, Peter, when you did your consideration, did you have the 1.9 million from the new town hall?
No, that wasn't, wasn't in the budget we had and the library was only in the budget by what Melissa had given us.
So you're aware that those two are outshaven?
Well, we, we did not take a position on the town because it wasn't in any document that we had in our hands. The library was in our hands and we did have an opinion on that.
Connor's busy making coffee. I'm trying to go slowly here.
I appreciate that.
So, John, how would you like the Advisory Budget Committee to proceed with the 1.9 million?
Well, what will happen is the Board of Selectmen next week will make a final determination of what goes to the public hearing on the seventh, after the meeting on the seventh, the ABC, at the meeting or the ABC members can comment or after the meeting or even before the meeting, the ABC could comment for the public hearing. And that's, that would probably be the best way to handle, A, the correction to the library to the new number, whatever. I haven't yet seen the new number and a couple of other changes. But I would think after the 17th from the board, then we'll put something in writing, get it to the ABC and then the seventh would be the logical time of the public hearing.
Yeah, Melissa had sent me the adjustments to the library and I personally didn't think they were significant, but I did share those with other members of the ABC. So again, certainly we'll, we'll be meeting again and perhaps next week might be an appropriate time and we'll formulate where we are given changes that we've seen recently. All right. Again, this is in the order of the budget, so I hope it's reasonably easy to follow. First is the executive, the benefits line, we thought was rather confusing because it had gone from almost 39,000 to 7,700. Must have been something really different there that we weren't sure.
It actually went the other way. The 7,700 was split into, the benefit line was split into two parts. It was split into the 01, 403001, 4290 for the elected officials and then the 0141302 lines, 4290 were for the town administrator and the deputy town administrator. So the 38 appearing in the town administrator, deputy town administrator included retirement and health insurance as appropriate and the number was reduced in the, the other benefit line. Last year it was, I believe, 7,700 and it was split, so it was like 301 and 3800 and the other, 3800. But the 3800 was because it's going to be a full-time position now instead of a.
Shouldn't have been 38,000, you mean?
38,000, yeah.
Okay.
Because of the benefits.
Okay. Any question or comment on that? Okay. All right. In the town clerk line, 4434, we thought based on historical expenditures, we thought that line could be reduced by $500 unless there was something important that was coming In financial administration, lines 4111 and 4112, we certainly were well informed that there were some changes going on there with personnel. And we're wondering if the lines are currently reflecting existing staffing or are they reflecting proposed staffing?
They reflected the staffing as of summer. Person has since retired, the board is considering what to do. And the request I have made is to combine two part-time positions into a full-time position. That would affect not only this line, but also the building inspection department as far as benefits go. But what is here right now is the existing three part-time positions between building inspection, which is in the building inspection budget, the assessing clerk and the selectmen's clerk are all in this part-time line here now.
Okay. And again, for the purposes of this meeting, and again, we had this discussion, so it's unfair for me to ask perhaps, but for the purposes of this discussion, can you ballpark how much of a change you think that'll represent if the board is agreeable to that change?
Overall, in terms of all of the benefit lines and the salary lines, it would be an increase of, what was the number? It wasn't, it wasn't as much as you might think.
Including both, John, it was like 7,500, I think.
Yeah, it went, yeah, it went from 57,500 total to 65,000, so about 7,500 total.
But that includes benefits, so that's not just in that line.
Correct.
The salary rate drops, but the benefits add on, so that's why it's 7,500.
Yep, exactly. And I, again, I apologize. We just talked about that, but for the purposes of this meeting, I thought that was important to ask. Any questions on that?
Would the output be the same, 40 hours? Is the part-time work 40 hours? Would the full-time work be 40 hours? Are you going to lose output?
We'd lose hours. What we're trying to do is to streamline, reduce space and that would work in that direction. The biggest two reasons are to reduce turnover and to, we believe they're compatible functions because they're both working with the same database and a lot of what the assessing does connects with the building. So for example, building permits, then, building permits trigger certain assessing reviews and that's the reason I'm making the recommendation that the two positions be combined.
But I think what Brad might be asking is, are we going to lose service hours? Is that basically the nature?
And are you going to spend more money to receive less services? And if so, what's the impact?
You're going to, you're going to have less hours of coverage for a little more money, correct? And, and the board has not yet agreed to that change and we're still looking at, there's three different ways this could go, so.
Okay. Continuing with financial administration, line 034310, assessing, is 35,000 in the budget enough for that budget?
No, that should be 45 and the next line should be reduced by five, so the net increase of 5,000 for the contract services next year. The total is 99 and right now we have it at 94. So the 35 should go to 45 and the 59,000 in the 4130 department should go down to 54,000.
Okay. We hadn't seen that in the recent print that we saw.
No, it hasn't yet.
Okay.
But that's, that's, it should be a total of plus five between the two lines.
Okay. And again, you commented on heating fuel in a memo to us today, so if you want to say that for the public record, please do that.
For the public record, we are overspending on heating line this year, but we've got a good deal going forward in terms of the rate, so I'm willing to leave the heating fuel here. However, the electric line is going down and even though we've locked in at a good rate going forward, I do believe we need to increase the electric line probably by 10% from 40 to 44. So.
Is that because we're paying more on the demand side of it? Like our supply is, is less expensive than the.
Yes. The amount of kilowatts that we're running and the non-lock-in price is part of the problem. In other words, ever source gets this chunk.
Right.
That we have no control over.
Right.
Between that and demand, it's, yes.
That's the delivery fee, not demand, delivery is actually what it is. There are delivery charges we have no control over, but we can, we can.
The generation.
Get our supply rate down to a more reasonable.
Yeah, we've improved our generation costs, but the, between the number of kilowatts and the delivery and other related ever source charges, the total is going up.
Did we lock into a three-year limit?
Three-year, yes.
I was just trying to remember.
I just think it was going to go up.
From 40 to 44. But heating, my initial reaction was we should increase heating and then Lynn pointed out that Paul Sanders had been able to get us locked in with the school at a much lower rate, so I think the rate is going down enough that we're all right where we are.
And that's only for propane, not for oil.
That's only propane?
That's propane, yeah.
Correct.
The only place left we're currently using oil is the public safety, or not the public safety building, the highway department.
I think so, yes.
Everything else, we've switched over to propane. That was when we specked out the new boilers for the fire safety building, or public safety building.
Yep.
We went to a propane boiler specifically for that reason.
I don't know what's at the library. Is that, is that propane too? Does someone know? I think we're propane there, but I don't know. Tara, the furnace next to your office that you hear?
I have the, I have the propane.
Okay. I don't know for sure around that though. And incidentally, that furnace is getting old enough that that may need replacing and we'd want to consider propane if that happens.
Okay. Cemeteries, again, we made a comment in our initial review that we didn't see any expenditures yet in cemeteries other than a few hundred dollars. And again, the Chair of the Commissioners has once again assured us those bills are in the works and we expect to see those. Again, our opposition is always to raise funds that are not expended, put them in the tax rate and then not do anything with them, but we're assured those are going to happen, so by year end, we hope we see them. Police, and again, I'm glad the chief is here. I thought we were told that the funds for shift differential were built into the salary lines, so we really expected that to be zero. But that hasn't changed yet, so we'd like to see that changed if that's true. He's nodding, so I guess we're in agreement.
Yes, we'll, we'll zero that shift dip account out because we are going to lump it into the hourly salary. I'll work with Lynn this week.
That's $8,760, that would be. I assume it's going to be a vote at the end of this meeting to make some of these changes.
No, not until the 17th.
So you want to have the form that you see on the 17th not reflect any changes?
That'll be up to the board to do that.
It's okay.
It's my understanding.
It's easier for me.
It's my understanding, I'll sit down on the 17th if somebody wants to vote in those changes tonight, then they will vote in, it's going to be the discretion of the board after this presentation.
If I may interject to the Chair that I think it would be helpful to the Budget Committee to have as much direction as we can have based on where you think you're going to go so that when we meet again, we have a better set of numbers for kind of anticipating where the bottom line is, where right now it's kind of amorphic. So we would appreciate as much being definitive as possible.
Absolutely. We'll go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Fire and rescue, I think in the part-time and stipend lines, we originally had asked to have some kind of a quantified value of how we ended up with part-time at the time it was. But again, I realize the board is going to vote on that tonight, I hope. If not, again, it's going to be another one of those things that sort of stay in the breeze until we get some resolution. We're still bugging the chief about increasing the vehicle maintenance line based on historical numbers. That's line 4433. At our meeting, we thought it was rational to bring it from 9,500 to 15,000. Again, just based on historical numbers. If it's a number the chief is content with, that's okay too, but just looking at what we have spent over the years, it looks low. We all set to there? Okay. Building inspection, again, we thought the overtime line, which is 4140, could come down a couple thousand dollars to a $3,000 number, again, based on historical expenditures. Okay. Highway, again, we're not always looking to slash something. In the case of the highway budget, we agreed with the Fire Chief's recommendation to put fire alarms in the highway buildings. And again, the estimated cost that we heard last week was about $15,000 and we would support that. And we wondered if anything, and there'll be more of this discussion coming, could that be something we could take from the 2018 budget as an encumbrance rather than have in the 2019 budget as an extra expense?
It's anticipated there'll be enough unexpended appropriations at the end of the year to be able to do that if the board chose to go there. I think there was some question as to whether the board wanted to go there, but the money is there.
And again, consistent with what I just said, any contracts that we can complete early in 2019, we would like to see encumbered, but both Peter Cook and Aaron Paradise have said to me that they didn't think they would have as much left in their budget as it looks now, that there are some bills that have come in that are going to kind of kill that, what looks like a surplus. And Aaron said she would send me her numbers based on what she knows even, which would be ahead of what Lynn sees on AP. So again, we're going to get some new numbers and get to look at some different things. Go ahead. Transfer station, in maintenance, we're wondering if there are going to be any expenditures and again, anything from that line that isn't going to be expended, can we encumber for a project quickly in 2019? Recreation, we voted four to one to clarify line 4580, where the numbers come for the director mileage. And again, we've had a sort of a big difference of opinion on the assistant director mileage. Members of the ABC on a four to one vote thought that deposit expenses should be from the revolving fund. And I just looked today to see that's the way they've been put to Lynn in AP is take them from the revolving fund. So taking them from the town budget would be a change. So again, I'm sure that'll be ongoing. In the library, line 4560, conferences and training, new budget didn't reflect the new number which Melissa gave us, which was 1675. She said that and the removal of the legal expense were the only changes from what we had seen in the past. Okay. In warrant articles, again, in my minutes, I try to run the meeting, but I also do the typing and I can't type, so it's hard for me. But there was a general discussion about whether or not the funds that were being requested were putting us online with what we need for expenditures in the near future. So again, as a point of reference, I listed what we had in the accounts in capital reserves for the fire truck, fire equipment, highway equipment, the bridge fund and communication. And again, part of our discussion was we realized the risk of making the number too high might make it unappealing to the voters as they look at a warrant article, but we did want to make sure that we were really thinking realistically about what our needs were relative to what we were asking in these warrant articles. All right. In general, if you've ever seen us out here trying to flip through the book, and I think I've seen many of you try to flip through the book, we would like to see it organized differently so that the highway budget is presented and then the narrative is presented right behind it and the warrant articles are right there with that so that we're not flipping quite as much as we are. If you look at our books, it seems to be all loaded with tabs so we can go from one section to another. And again, sitting here in a chair, it's very hard to keep all that straight and we think a different organization would be very beneficial. We are waiting for the Technology Committee's updates on communication and phone. I think we have a general sense of where that's going, but when we see that, we again might want to have some response. And again, probably should have been in with the fire as to whether we have a written policy on the two-hour callback. We were curious about that as it relates to the fire department. And we continue to recommend when possible, and we had a lengthy discussion about this last year, but again, it's still a fairly important topic to members, certain members of the ABC as to whether excess revenues and unexpended budget amounts can be shared with the taxpayer rather than all allocated to warrant articles. And we certainly realize that's really depends on how much surplus there is and what is before the board. Obviously, some of what I've already said, like whether warrant articles are funded enough for future expenditures, would have a bearing on that. But again, it's been many years since we've seen any tax relief based on what we have for surplus and we feel there are occasions where that's possible.
Peter, thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Oh, I have one more thing.
Do.
And that is, and it'll be in amended minutes, there was a discussion about becoming a municipal budget act community. That would be where the Budget Committee has authority over the budgets and expenditures and really would take away some of your authority. That was not approved by the ABC on a vote of four to one. So we would prefer to stay as we are. And John did some research on that, which I appreciated, I think it was back in 2013?
Yes.
That.
Of '14.
There was a petition article to have Barrington become a municipal budget act town and it got voted down by more than two to one. I don't think the community is excited about that proposal. The Budget Committee wasn't excited about that proposal. And so again, just as a point of information, that the subject came up and was not received well by the Budget Committee.
Say anything.
Now I'm done.
Thank you, sir. I want to thank the ABC for all the work they've done. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Please, please, just wait, hang on a minute. Does anybody have any questions of Peter before he leaves?
No, I just would like to state, I think that this way of doing it is looking very well.
Here, here.
I totally agree that what we used to do before wasted department head time and our time and this is much more efficient.
Very transparent.
Even though I can't type, Don, it's rivet to me.
I can't either. It's my responsibility.
It's okay by me. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you again.
Thanks, Andy. Appreciate it. Well, we have Peter's recommendation and what have you, how would the board like to act on this? Or do they want to act on it? Please, a discussion. Also, as a reminder to the board members, if we accept everything that's in here, or if you would, that next week when we sit down to review the budget again, we still have another opportunity. If that's something you would like to remove or to leave in, it'll be available for us to have discussions in. But one of the things I have to say right here is that under the articles, under the general. But one of the things I have to say right here is that under the articles and the generals, if everybody wants, I would ask you at your consideration to vote on everything as far as warrant articles and then take the general articles one at a time instead of including them with a whole item.
I know, I've been making notes.
Please, go ahead.
As I go, I've been making notes as I've gone along, but I didn't put it all together in a succinct way to talk about it because I was under the impression we were talking about it next week.
Yeah.
I don't know if anybody else has...
But if we put these items in now, it gives John a chance to turn around and print everything, get it before us for their recommendations. And then when we sit down next week to review this, we will also have this document with us, and we can ask John some of the changes that come from here is to highlight it with a different color. Would that be acceptable? Tracy, please, go ahead.
I do have one quick question. The recreation mileage in prior years was not part of the budget, is that what I'm understanding?
It has been part of the budget. It was accidentally placed within the revolving fund this year, and I did request for that adjustment to be made and was told that it would not be made.
My one other question here is if the, and I say this based on email discussions, if the drop-off is to take place at the Town Hall, and that was to take place five days a week at 2.9 miles, if we reduce the actual expected mileage to somewhere less than $500, is that...
I would have to look at those numbers.
Well, no, 55 cents a mile?
Fifty.
Fifty cents a mile times 2.9 miles times five days a week times 52 weeks, you're at $377.
So that's for the administrative assistant. The recreation director position then would be allocated no funds for mileage.
Okay. So...
While I had you here, mileage on the conferences, is that, do you include mileage when you have the conference and training?
Yes.
So in that line item, conference and training, it does have mileage money?
No, I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
That's...
Within the mileage line, the recreation director is allocated $500, the administrative assistant, I believe I broke it down on the sheet. The rec director's mileage does include any sort of training and conferences that pertained to the job.
And the reason I ask that question is that was something that the ABC had discussed as to whether or not that everyone had included in the training the mileage for that. Some of them did and some of them didn't, and that's why I asked that question. So what, if, you know, because of the hoopla we're going through right now, I'd like to see some changes. We put your estimated mileage in, four years, conferences and training in that, and then put the rest of the mileage in the other way. I don't know how the Board feels, but that would make it a lot easier for everybody. So if they went for training somewhere or a conference, now they have the mileage and what have you.
If you know where they're going for training, maybe you could pull that off, but you have to know where they're going and how many people are going, where they're traveling from. I mean, you can, you can kind of give it a rough thumb.
Well, I agree with you, but after the first year, if there's any difference in the first year or any shortfalls or anything else, this is the basis for the following year to put that together. That's why we'll get started and have it allocated the right way. Tracy?
So based on the change in drop-off from the Northwood Ranch, subtracting $500 for the director, and knowing that the drop-off would take place at the Town Hall, it's less than a $300 expenditure. So I'm not, I mean, certainly if you're not going to spend the 300, reduce it by 300, but I'm just not sure that it's an overly important line item at this point. There was nothing that the ABC recommended that I didn't feel that the Board could approve. Was there any particular item that we are hesitant about accepting the recommendation of?
Budget-wise, I didn't, I didn't see any...
Chairman?
Just, excuse me.
No.
I heard, I'm just saying that budget-wise, I agree with you. John?
Yeah, I think the general statements are ones that we need to look at more closely to understand better. I would say that in general, the, with the understanding of what the answers are, what I would suggest you do is to make a motion and cite line and dollar numbers so it's real clear what we're adjusting, but basically what they're suggesting makes sense. It's just a matter of, I don't want you to globally adopt it because some of these are not as clear as to exactly what you want. So I want to have a clear motion such that you might say, reduce the town clerk 4434 by 500, increase the assessing line by 10,000, reduce the property assessment line by 5,000, increase the electric lines by 4,000 to 44,000, remove the 8760 from the shift differential and, you know, that, that kind of a motion, as detailed and specific.
If you did it well, John, then I could say so moved.
And then...
I'm on board with that.
Increase the vehicle maintenance line to 15,000, reduce the overtime line in building from, to, by $2,000. Then, see, highway and reduce the rec by whatever the number was. I don't, there's no specific number in here.
It's $300.
$300.
$299 to be accurate.
And increase the library conference and training by $300, because I think that, how much to get to 1675? Reduce it to 1675?
No, reduce it to 1375.
Ah, 1675 is the number here, so you're saying, change it to 1375?
Yes.
I have that, I have 1375 in the budget.
I do, too. It says over here on the handout to reduce it by $300, because it was originally printed at 1675, so it's supposed to go to 1375.
So make it 1375, which, I just verified that that's what it is. So I believe that is, and the highway lines, all of those are suggestions on operations and this year's budget, not on changing next year's budget. So, and like the part-time stipend line, that Board hasn't made a decision, the same with the personnel changes, but, so they'd be the, I think it was one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight changes.
So moved.
It's fire alarm?
Second.
What?
Further discussion?
No, the fire alarm wasn't in there because it was suggested to come out of this year's budget by the ABC, so therefore we'd have to make some kind of decision on that. So that wasn't one of the eight.
Well, and there are some questions that I would want answered now, before we just went and did that.
Yeah, yes. Talking about the alarm system? Okay, yes, yes. Agreed.
Do we validate the building? Do we do things that are going to set the alarm off on a routine basis? Is there a combined fire and CO2?
Why don't we wait till we open that? We'll open it there, please. All right. Did any further discussion?
Actually, there are nine that I've...
All right.
I brought a notice up. I didn't want to, I thought we'd go through it next week, too.
We are, we are going to go through it again. This is just to approve this, we can get it to print, then we can sit down and discuss it on the 17th.
Well, that's why I went to the Town Hall today, we should have traded, clink coffee, and then tonight, as a matter of fact, we just need to get it tonight for next week, so.
Any other, any other comments? Take it to a vote.
George? I would like to comment.
With you, Peter, I will make an exception, please.
This is somewhat of a cross between my position on the ABC and my position as treasurer. But the ABC four to one did not want to see mileage coming out, mileage for deposits coming out of town funds. And our rationale for that was simply if the funds are coming from programs, it's a program expense, it ought to come from the revolving fund. And that was why we haven't seen anything this year. The paperwork we've had all year has said, take it from the revolving fund. So this would be a change. But the other thing as treasurer I want to add is that many years ago, the rec wasn't getting any benefit from the revolving fund as far as interest earned. And now it's several thousand dollars that they earn based on things that I changed. So again, I don't think a few hundred dollars is going to kill them out of the revolving fund, given that they're getting thousands of dollars in interest. So anyway, the ABC would have to vote on this again. But the other issue with what Tracy was saying is that it wouldn't be five days a week they can drop off because the Town Hall suddenly opened four days a week. So the fifth day would be an issue. Part of what we had discussed back in 2017 was that they could have a scanner, they could make other arrangements, and I'm not sure what options are still available, but I don't think it's a done deal. And especially since they're operating five days a week and the town is operating four days a week, there's a little bit of an issue there.
Thank you. Anybody have, before, anybody have questions of Peter before he goes? Tracy?
So Peter, with the four-day-a-week drop-off, that reduces the amount, we've reduced that line item two to $239. So I personally see absolutely nothing wrong with ensuring that deposits take place on a timely basis and are dropped off at the Town Hall and have no axe to grind over less than $1,000. So I'm perfectly comfortable reducing the line item, but $239 for four days a week that the assistant would be dropping deposits off. But certainly don't think in the current setting it's appropriate to make accounting changes if in prior years mileage came out of this particular budget.
They didn't. They came out of the revolving fund.
Can I, if I may, what, looking, I have in your book the law, the history of what's been done for hall lines, and if you turn to that, it's near the front of your book. Sorry, I don't have a page number, but it's the 2013 to 2017 expenditure. What you will find for the rec revolving mi, the rec mileage fund is that in 2014, they paid $189, in 2014, nothing. 2015, $16530. In 2016, the full 500 was expended, and then you would have to go to the more recent budget report to get the rest of the numbers, and it would show that, that recreation, again, it had been budgeted 500 for all of these years. In 2017, they spent nothing in 2017, they spent nothing in 2018, they spent nothing, and then they budgeted 1248 in 2018, but they didn't spend it. And this year, they're projecting a budget of 1248 is the request, so.
Well, no, that became 1748.
1748, they're up two.
Well, that's 1748. Yes, I see that number, yeah. So, but, but it looks to me like in most years, they didn't use the 500 that much. And it was only when they started, the only, the big increase in mileage was when the banking change occurred. That accurate?
Can I also comment?
Please come up here. Thank you.
So I just want to make sure that it's understood that also, from 2010 to approximately 2016 or 17, the recreation director claimed no mileage because there was no money funded for that expenditure. So that's why the rec commission, it was, and I will pull them in, it's either six, it was either 16 or 17, increased that line, it may have even been last year, increased that line so the recreation director could be reimbursed for mileage. Because the recreation director didn't claim any mileage for six or seven years, because it was not funded.
Any other comments from the Board? We have a motion, we have a second to accept. Everyone but the general, when they went through, is, anybody want to make an exception to the recreation section of it, or do you want to wait until next week to finish it?
The reduction of that line item appears to equate to $239,000 in reduction for the assistant.
239.
No, 1,000.
Oh, just reduce it by two, what did I say?
239,000.
Oh, sorry. $239. I think we should reduce the line by $239 and expect that the assistant dropped the deposit off four days a week at the Town Hall.
So what is your intent that the line will be when you're done with the change? Is that 17,000 and change?
It's at what, 1748?
Yes.
239.
Minus 239?
1509.
1509.
So you're, you're cutting the total budget for everything with all of these ups and downs by about $2,500?
Great.
Yeah, it's just, it's basically adjusting, that's all you're doing tonight. So the final number will be, let's move down here somewhere, 1509. She hasn't done that math right, but whatever you guys want to do.
2.9.
So, I mean, the rec mileage you want to put in the number, you want 1509 in there, correct?
Is that what you want, Tracy?
Yes.
Okay.
All right, with the...
And then the rest of the changes are, if I can go over them real quick.
Yep.
The town clerk, equipment is down 500.
Excuse me, please.
If I may go over, what I think the changes that you're agreed, that you're voting on on this motion is town clerk, 4434 is down 500, the assessing is up 5,000, the revale is, I mean, up 10,000, the revale is down 5,000, the electric for buildings is up 4,000, the police is down 8,760. Fire, I don't know what the change is, but it's going to 15,000, so that's an increase. The building inspector overtime is coming down 2,000, the rec is going to 1,509, the library is going to 1,375. Is that the understanding what the motion consists of?
Yes.
Any further discussion, please? Seeing now, I'll take a vote. Bailey, I.
Napa. Article I.
I abstain.
Motion, thank you. Thank you, everyone. Peter, I want to thank you and the Board again for everything you've done. We appreciate it. This will close our section on budgets. Sure, John, go ahead.
Now, as far as warrant articles go, you want to comment on those at the public hearing or...
We want to see what they are before we can comment.
Yep. Understandable. See them all, not just the ones you got.
You're right.
Yep.
I just want to make one comment and correction to comment was made. There's nobody here that's trying to have an axe to grind with the rec department. I want that to be stated publicly here. And nobody on the ABC has an axe to grind with anybody here. Thank you. Moving on. Public comments. Public comments will be limited to 15 minutes, and three minutes each. Who do we have here? Chief?
I thought you could have all 15 minutes.
How do you only have two?
I'll give you my three.
We said 15 minutes.
I get all the size.
This last week.
This is, this here is what you posed to ask before last night, because, I mean,
Call rate schedule.
So what I wanted to, if I could call your attention, the proposed fire rescue pay for a call rate schedule. Right now, if you look down on the bottom, the average of pay scale would be about $15.50 per person, which shows about a 50 cent an hour increase, which is about 3% as to what we're doing at this point. The, I spent a lot of time looking over where we were at. And we shouldn't be using the term stipend. We've been using that term for about 10 years. We do not, we've never ever used a stipend system. The only time we ever used a stipend was when the fire chief prior to me received a stipend for being chief and then I received a stipend for being chief. Other than that, nobody's ever used the term stipend. We've always paid, used a pay-per-call system, which is what we currently are still using. And a number of years ago, when we instituted this, 10 or 12 years ago, the board of selectmen and the budget committee looked to work using a stipend or, I mean, excuse me, a point system. And a point system, it gave a specific amount of money and then it was divvied out with a number of points that were used. And we still currently operate in that vein. I'm, again, I'm proposing to change that to an hourly rate based on that document. So that currently, right now, with the stipend system, pretty much everybody gets the same thing by going through an hourly, by going through an hourly system. It would change that. If you look on the volunteer categories down the bottom, I'm recommending that 014121, which is currently response stipend, be removed and replaced by deputy fire chief stipend, renumber that 201. And then take the 4112 pot time hourly and rename that pay-per-call hourly, which would reflect exactly what we're doing now. Looking at the numbers, past history of what we've spent in that line, looking at the, I looked, I said, looked at the numbers, the last four or five year history, I feel comfortable that I had originally asked to increase that line by about $10,000. And that's primarily because I'm hoping that moving to this type of a system and paying a little bit more often, that will, it will foster more response from our current members. I would.
Chief Walker, you have exceeded your three minutes.
Okay, real quick, if you, I was hoping you'd take that $4,000 instead of the 15,000 that they're looking for in the vehicle maintenance line, take 4,000 out of that line, move that over to the vehicle maintenance line, so my budget would stay level. Thank you.
Anybody else have public comments, please? Come up, state your name, please.
Charterlee. As most of you know, I've been here a long time and they care about this, it'll be a great deal. So I'm here specifically to ask you to rescind the action, action you took a week ago to bring before the voters in March of 2019, a bond to build the town hall. There are numerous reasons why I think we should do this. First and foremost, you made a public commitment not to bring a bond in 2019 in order to give the library project the best possible chance to pass in year one. It was not a conditional commitment. There was no quid pro quo of any sort. I believe the minutes to that effect constitute a memo of understanding. Why would any individual apartment head or organization have confidence in an MOU this board would sign in the future if it is merely a fungible matter, subject to some unknown future random modification? Furthermore, the large number of citizens willing, working to fulfill the mission of the Library Foundation has spent hundreds of hours to raise half a million dollars to support this project and provide a real financial contribution that results in a long-term benefit to all taxpayers in Barrington. Furthermore, this unprecedented, and I might even say historic, effort to raise these resources from generous contributions from individuals, families, businesses, reflects the broad interest of the citizens of our town seeing this project, to see this project in completion. These individuals and businesses were told that the project had a good chance of meeting that required 50% supermajority because it would not be competing with another bond. You have now turned all these hardworking volunteers into snake oil salesmen because you have turned their assurance into a lie. Furthermore, at the last year's deliberative session, the citizens voiced their strong support for well-funded and well-conceived town hall and asked that the $750,000 be set aside and reserved to contribute to a more carefully crafted town hall proposal. And the citizens were quite clear, they wanted a town hall situated on Ramsdale Lane. So they would have a town campus that included the library, along with the ECLC, the REC department building, the playing fields, the playground, and the library community center. Furthermore, it is clear that your proposed bond amount is simply an invented number detached from any reality in order to simply arrive at a number lower than $2 million. Furthermore, this effort began as an attempt to coerce an agreement about future actions that could not be taken unless the foundation agreed to bring a bond request, agreed not to bring a bond request back in two successive years. Instead, if the bond were to fail in the first year, they would have to return the half a million dollars to the donors because they could not adhere to the conditions under which the donations were made. Furthermore, because the trustees and the foundation could not and did not agree to the, to the coercive terms, the selected board decided to abandon the MOU and place a second bond on the warrant. This could reasonably be seen as an act of retaliation, which the public and the donors will come to see as an attempt to scuttle the chances of the library bond passing. The community has put its money where its mouth is, and I might say heart is. Why would this or any other board put that at risk?
Mr. Weeks, you have reached three minutes.
Would you give me another couple of minutes, sir, please?
Ward, mine? Ward object? Ward does not object, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. I've lived in this town for over 40 years and served on three boards. I watched over and over again as plans for town facilities were cheapened up and in the end proved inadequate at the moment they were opened and are still inadequate today. In some cases, substantial additional sums of money required to make buildings continue to use, this building, one of them being one of them. This building took almost, I think, something close to $1 million to rehabilitate, much of it came from ours or was out of the taxpayers' money, but nonetheless, a very expensive rehab rehabilitation. Our town is now at that size, it makes it imperative that we build a public facilities with a life expectancy of 40 or 50 years to accommodate future growth. Granted, a $1.9 million town hall doesn't meet that criterion. Previous boards worked assiduously to develop a plan for a town hall. That plan exists and has been paid for. It missed voter approval by less than 100 votes. The current board should return to that plan with any modifications deemed necessary and should present it to the voters in 2020. I again urge the board to return to its original commitment to throw your unqualified support and enthusiasm behind the library community center project, and at the same time, return to a previous plan developed by a previous board or to some similar plan that needs based, that is needs-based and meets a 50-year criterion, which can then be put forward in 2020. Remember, we can rent the building we are now in for 25 year, more years without spending $1.9 million. I have, I have no reason to think that cheap is economical, so I'm asking you to reconsider this matter and let's do things like that. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter Kovacs. I just have one statement to make to you, Mr. Weeks. On when it came time to renovation of this building, this building was under, and still is under the auspices of the school board. And the school board put that information forward and the voters did approve to do this building. So it's out of the hands of the board of selectmen.
No, I understand. The board of the town general.
Excuse me, sir. I gave you your time.
Thank you, yes, sir.
And the school board put that information forward and the voters approved it, and that's where it came from. Thank you. Does anybody else have a comment? Selectman here, select person here, sorry.
Yes, this information that the fire chief gave me right now, I tell John, I need more timely five days for review.
Excuse me, is this on Mr. Weeks' comments?
No.
No, please, that's what we're talking about right now. Hold on just a second.
I'll make a comment, Mr. Weeks.
Okay. Is there any other?
I'll make a comment on Mr. Weeks' statement then.
If you have one, please give it.
We have no guarantee that we can rent that town hall for 25 years. It's year-to-year basis of something could happen. There's no guarantees. And a lot of people are seeing that too, so we are facing other issues for that.
After the first five years, Mr. Weeks, of running that building, it has to go before the voters. The voters have to approve the continuation of the use of that building.
If I may, we're on a month-to-month, then that doesn't need approval by the board because it's basically month-to-month.
On the years that he was talking about.
Can have us out.
Any other public comment? Mr. Here, you have a public comment?
Yes. I tell the town administrator that the rules say I need five days to review stuff. If something gets dropped on me, I mean, I can't act on it. Sorry. Because I think if this should have been more timely, it could have got to me before tonight. Thank you.
Any other public comments? Tracy, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Chairperson Bailey.
Selectman Harakoff, sorry.
Thank you. Select person Harakoff, thank you. So is there in fact a memo of understanding that no town hall would be brought forward this year?
No.
Was there a discussion surrounding this prior to my election to this position?
There had been discussion over the years that two bonds would have less of a chance than one bond.
Okay.
But I don't remember any memorandum of agreement or anything along those lines.
Okay. As a select person sitting now, are we held to any prior decisions that any prior boards may have made? Legally or morally or ethically?
Certainly not legally. It depends upon the decision. As far as the design that we had, we actually gave that to the library and it would not work at any other location on that Ramsdale site except where the library wants to go. So therefore, the town can proceed with the prior developed plan for town hall.
Okay, to you, Marie.
Okay, that's helpful. And then it's my understanding that four or five times a proposed town hall has failed. And it is my understanding that you have reduced the size of this particular building that's being proposed to below 10,000 square feet.
Yes, actually, two renovations failed and then two new constructions failed. And the size has been reduced substantially in order to bring the price down under 2 million.
Okay. And it is also my understanding that multiple times, 40, 50,000 dollars have been expended to design buildings that were brought before the residents of the town and then failed.
A lot more than 50,000, but correct.
So it is my understanding that this board has decided to go forward with a design build in order to avoid expending 40, 50,000 dollars on another design and to use ICF building materials in order to reduce operating costs for things such as heating in the new location.
Correct. And I think it's over 200,000 in design money, not 50.
Very good. And it's also my understanding that the site that this building is being proposed on would be less expensive than to build on the Ramsdale Lane property.
Given the constraints and size that you'd be building multi-story on the Ramsdale site, yes.
Thank you.
Marie, please.
Thank you. Marie Harris, Lois Lane. I'd just like to clarify a couple of points that I think are a little bit murky. Several meetings ago, and this is not a different board, this is this board, several meetings ago, it was agreed, and it's in the minutes, so we'll have to go back and look, that this board said that the library bond, that the library would, the library bond would be put forward and that in 2019, and that no other bond would be put forward in that year. You can go back to the minutes and have a look. I think that Charterlee said something about that constituted a memorandum of agreement. He didn't say it was one. It was, it was, that people would assume that that was a memorandum of agreement. And I think you can go back to those minutes and see that this board agreed unanimously that only one bond would be put forward. I think you're nodding, I don't know.
That's the way I remember it.
Okay. In 2019. So that I'd like to put on record. The second thing is that I wasn't here at the last meeting, but I understand that this $1.9 million was arrived at on the fly. There is no plan, there is no, any sort of plan for a town hall, just like, well, it's not 2 million bucks, so let's just make it 1.9 and go for a design bill. There is, there is land next to what's going to be the new library community center. That land has been engineered. It has been engineered with a well and a septic system such that two buildings could use that. Some modifications might have to be made, but that's already been in the engineering. That's something we can demonstrate. And I just, I just want to say that these comments that are being made are, I think, being pulled out of thin air. And again, a $1.9 million town hall isn't enough money for a proper town hall, for a town hall that will, that serves this community for 40 or 50 years. We need to spend real money with a real plan and bring it before the voters one year from now. And we'll put, I will say this, we'll put our substantial efforts that we have spent for the last year and a half behind this next project. We've learned how to do it. We've reached out to townspeople all over, all over this town, and we'll do it again in, in support of a town hall. But let's just do it right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public, John?
It was not just throwing a dot at a dot board for the dollar number. It was calculated off 9,000 square feet with a construction cost of $200 a square foot, which was determined to be a reasonable number per square foot. And the 9,000 square feet came from taking a look at the design with the space needs analysis that had been done for the last town hall that we built and reducing it based on the moving towards electronic records and scanning records and being able to reduce some of the areas in there for the size of the building. So that's how it was, that's how it was determined, 1.9 million.
Any further, Trace, select person Harakoff.
It's also my understanding that at any time throughout the process of the past year, we did not have the opportunity for the current land that will be available on 125. Is that correct, John?
Correct.
And it's also my understanding that we have a timeline for the build and usage of that land. Is that correct?
Yes.
So unfortunately for the select board, the decision to bring forward a bond is tied to the amount of time. Timeline, John?
The timeline is that we need to have construction started by 2021.
So we would have one opportunity, or we have this year. If we don't use this year, we will have one opportunity to use that land.
You would have 2019, 2020, and 2021. You'd have, you'd have those two, those chances, because you'd need to start construction within sometime before the, during the summer of 2021. So you would have basically three bites at going to town meeting.
Select person there, you have 1 minute 30 seconds.
Give me a time?
You have 1 minute 30 seconds left to public comment.
All right. First of all, we did interrupt a quote from a contractor on it, and we will go back to the other plans and stuff. And then since all this engineering and stuff that's going on up there, the state has changed the rules. And on the, on the water shed, the water offsite, it's up there, control it all. Route 9 is failing, there's water pumping up the middle of the road right now. So the state is not, is not coming down on us, we don't meet the pot. You have 1 minute 30 seconds left to public comment.
All right. First of all, we did interrupt a call from a contractor on it, and we will go back to the other plans and stuff. And then, since all this engineering and stuff that's going on up there, the state has changed the rules, and on the, on the water shed, the water offsite, and stuff, they have control of it all. Route 9 is failing, there's water pumping up the middle of the road right now. So the state is not, is it come down on us? We don't meet the pocket up there? You're asking a lot up there and with the legs? When, I'm in construction. When that goes out the, out the bid, it's going to scare you. All the detention bonds, all the stone, what we have to do now to meet the state's regulations. Times have changed. I'm done.
Selectperson Air.
I just want to make a comment that I do take exception to some of those comments, because there has been a lot looked at. The technology committee has done an enormous amount of work to figure out how to be more economical with space, how to save space, and how to be efficient with what we're doing. Everything from plot planners, scanners, data storage, centralized storage, like everything that they have worked on to make sure that we didn't need a bigger building and need more space to hold paper, which is a giant waste at $200 a square foot. $200 a square foot is the high end of an architecturally designed building. Working on multiple buildings, I firmly believe that that number is solid and legit. If you look at a basic industrial building, you're anywhere from $75 to $100 a square foot. And if you're starting to get into an architecturally designed building, you're around $200 a square foot. The proposal on the library is $350 a square foot. That if 4.5 million...
Please.
If 4.5 million at 13,000 square feet...
Excuse me, Mr. Weeks, please let him finish.
At 4.5 million at 13,000 square feet, it's $346.66 a square foot, if you want to be technical. So based on all of that, if it's a lower number, I haven't seen anything that gets it to that lower number. And I would love to see that information, but nobody has presented anything of the sort.
Members of the board, would you increase the select time to five minutes, please?
I was going to recommend that we should increase the time for public comment, because the board of selectmen and myself have taken some of the public comment time, because we've been responding. The other point I wanted to make is that one prominent builder that does ICF recently built a, a building for police and fire in Farmington, and brought it in under $150 a square foot.
I can attest to that, because I walked to that building today. So I have been through the building, I've seen everything that they have, I've seen what they've done. I have worked with that builder on other projects, and have been speaking with them recently, as a matter of fact. So I'm very familiar with the construction and what they do.
We have an additional five minutes. Is there any other public comment?
Sam Bobic, 34 Saly Lane. I appreciate all the hard work the board does. As Maria and Charterlee said, this is, you know, what happened last meeting definitely came as a surprise to us, especially after being told in May that nothing was being planned for a town hall at all. Realize that you are in a different position than you were in, and that you have a deal in front of you that you want to jump on. But I think what you're hearing from us, and certainly something I feel, is that it's a big, big old surprise for us to be having two different, effectively a competitive bond on the table for March. And especially as we've educated the community, I think in the talks that I've had, that's something that has been discussed, is that town hall has never been, was, was something that wasn't going to be on the table for 2019, so, yeah. Just stating that it makes things more difficult, having those two on the board. Thanks.
One of the items that surprised us, too, was the time constraints that the individual put on us for the land. We really had little to no choice.
My, my other comment on that is, is everyone has made the comment about an implied MOU, and I specifically remember that meeting earlier this year. In that meeting, it was asked if there was anything planned, and the response was, at the time, there is nothing on the table, and there is nothing planned. There was, and that was exactly, I believe, as to how it was responded to at that point in time, is that we didn't have anything at that point in time. It doesn't, it didn't mean that there wouldn't be anything that would come up, or that there was anything there. It was just that, at the time, there was nothing planned.
Any other public comment? Please, please. Selectperson Hardikoff, I'm sorry, I didn't see you.
Hi there. Lindsay Macey, R's Gracie Way. Just a clarifying question, because I'm confused. At that meeting that we're all discussing, where we came and asked that of you all, it definitely was our understanding. I believe selectperson Hardikoff and selectperson Knapp had both shared that they felt that that didn't make sense to put two on. We left feeling really, like that was a very positive interaction, so it is, it is quite confusing to us to then look back. But my question is, is my understanding was, at that meeting, when we left, you did let us know that there was that timeframe from the developer or whatnot. And I believe it was discussed that you would potentially go back and ask them, instead of a two-year term, or whatever he'd first given you, for a five-year term. And then we never heard anything about that, so I didn't know if that was done, what did they say, and what that procedure looked like.
Javi, Connor and I met with the developer. It was pretty clear that he wanted a vote this year on at least the design money to indicate that there was support in the community in going forward towards a town hall, which is what led to the $50,000 that's in the warrant article. The warrant article started out in October as $2 million. The board then took it out, we then put in $50,000, and then last meeting, they put in $1.9, $1.9 million. And the indication from the developer was that something has to happen. He did not insist that the bond go forward. He was acceptable if there was a commitment with a design money for $50,000. But the board, last meeting, thought about going with design build, so that's how we ended up where we are now.
Selectperson Hardikoff.
So it's my understanding that both of these bonds, 8.64 million dollars, and that at the time that these funds would be spent, we will have an expiring bond on the middle school. Have we done a projection for the residents of this town, so that they can understand the financial impact, should they go forward and approve the, the infrastructure building of the library and the town hall at about the same time where the bond on the middle school is expiring?
The two bonds together would be less than the middle school bond by quite a bit.
About a third, right?
About a, between a third and a half. And the only issue would be, is that if they were both approved, if either was approved in 2019, or if they both were approved, the repayment schedule will start before the middle school bond comes off. That's the, by, well, depending upon how you count, one or two years, because their fiscal year differs from ours, but, yeah, one or two years.
Don't you also run into the conundrum that because it's part of their included budget, that money doesn't, doesn't drop off?
Well, it depends upon what they do with their budget. It comes out of their default budget, but whether or not it comes out of their proposed operating budget is up to the school board.
Selectperson Air.
I'm not the smartest person, but over the years, the school board has nothing to do with us. But when you take all their teachers' raises and stuff, that, that budget's never going to go down. There's no, I don't see any big savings. I can't compute it in my free brain. But over the years, it will be gone, but over the years, with all the raises and stuff, that was a town vote that we have no control over, there's going to be no change in the budget. I don't see any savings. I've asked the school board that personally, and they will not give me a straight answer. They can't, they don't know.
Chairman, could I have 30 seconds?
Just, just a second. Any other comments from the board? Ms. Harris.
Selectperson Hardikoff brought up, I think, the most crucial question of the evening. We've spent more than a year educating person by person, group by group, small, small household organizations, and we're going to do more to explain to the public why 4.5, or 4.3, or whatever this ends up being, bond benefits the community and costs them less than one small pizza a month. How, between now and the deliberative session, how and who can explain to the public this extra bond? I mean, does it fall upon us? Do you have a committee of public relations people who can go out there and do what we've been doing for a year and a half to explain? And so I'm a voter, I don't, I haven't looked at anything too carefully, and I look at these two bonds, and one says 4.3, and one says 1.9, and I say, eh, come on, 1.9 with that. It'll be like that, because the work hasn't been done to sell a proper town hall. I'm sorry, I'm sounding, I'm sounding, you know, very firm, but the fact is, hundreds of hours and dozens of people in this town have worked for a year and a half to make this bond acceptable to the public. And now we've got one that we're competing with that we don't have any backup for. No public relations, no outreach, and there's not enough time between now and February 2nd to do that outreach properly. Thank you.
Selectperson Hardikoff.
Based on Marie's comment, the easiest way I could explain it, Marie, is 1.42 small pizzas. So, and I, I'm not saying that facetiously. I'm saying the easiest way I can explain this to the stakeholders and the residents of this town is that a build on the town hall means a reduction in the rent that we're paying, means that we begin to be able to tax the town hall again. And I can be 100% in support of the library and still be 100% in support of a town hall. And to not put it forward, and then only have the potential of two opportunities to use land that costs us a dollar, to me would be doing a disservice to the residents of this town.
Who's going to sell it?
I think we just did. 1.42 small pizzas.
Please, please wait for the comment. Selectperson Hardikoff has it. Please sit down, I'll get to all of you. We have a couple minutes left.
I think, I, I, this isn't a zero-sum game. This is not a zero-sum game. This is not, if somebody gets a piece of the pie, somebody else gets no pie. And I think that the most important thing is, this town has asked for complete transparency in our processes, and this select board has done an excellent job in bringing forth every bit of transparency in every process with every bit of communication. And in no way was this bond brought forward in order to not embrace the library, but to do due diligence and to stop paying rent for a town hall that we are paying for. The select board is doing what is both in the fiduciary interest of the residents of this town, and in the long-term infrastructure interest. And that means that we can support both, both personally, and in the role of being sure that we approve the bond agreements.
Whoever's pounding, please. Could you move your foot? Thank you. Charter, Mr. Weeks.
I just want to say that one thing, if you're putting at risk, is a half a million dollars raised by this committee to help provide a lower cost to this building. And if it, if it fails, it simply, that money will disappear at some point. And that's what's at risk. If you talk about fiduciary responsibility, that half a million dollars is not part of taxes. It's a reduction in taxes, and it has serious benefit to the taxpayers of this town.
Mr. Weeks, wasn't that collective on, on the effort of they'll have three, three tries to get this passed, and then they were going to give the money back? Isn't that correct?
They're giving the money back if it doesn't pass.
After three years.
After three.
Thank you. After three, thank you.
I had a question for the library committee. It said that your number is $233 a square foot. Is that still based on the 13,000 square foot with a new proposed? That would put the proposed number at $3,290,000. Is there somebody that can, can answer that question, or talk to that question?
Is there somebody on the?
Just by understanding the question, can you, can you say it again?
So, so as we were having this dialogue earlier, someone raised that the library, the cost per square footage was at $233 a square foot. $233 a square foot times 13,000 square feet is $3,290,000.
So are you asking if that's the number for the bond?
Well, I'm asking if that is...
Cost per square foot. I believe this morning at our committee meeting, it was 234. Or maybe I have that number wrong. But again, we're working on that budget, line for line, line for line right now, shaving and doing what we can do. And again, we want to be transparent about that, too. You say you want to see that? Great, come to one of our meetings. We are more than happy to have you look at those lines.
Right, but unfortunately, I also have a place of employment that I need to support.
I mean, obviously, I understand that.
Who supports me.
As do I, and I'm here, and I get that.
Can I just explain a little bit?
Excuse me, let me, let me caution everybody here, please. We've had a civil discussion so far. If it continues the way I think it's going, I'm going to have to call time on this and move this meeting along. Please do not have any comments that are adverse to the individual that you're talking to. John, just a minute, John.
If I may. Thank you, Lindsay. If, if we could get information on the total square footage and the cost per square foot, that would be helpful. I don't need it right now. I just had, just email it to us or whatever.
We fully are giving you our, December 17th is our deadline, right? So you're going to have all of that within seven days.
Thank you. Charter, you have a comment?
I believe it was higher than 233, I don't remember the exact number this morning. The point, the point I was trying to be made here is that, that apparently, according to the architect, we have to submit a number to the bond bank that represents all of the potential dollars to start with. This, this, the proposed budget has $500,000 in contingency in it. There's also $500,000 coming from the fund, the fund development. So there's a lot of money that's still sitting there that can be used, and apparently, according to the architect, when, after the, after the actual dollars have been determined, that will be determined by the bond bank, the, the actual bond will then reflect the account, the account of money that's normally provided by the, by the fundraising. So that'll reduce it by a half a million dollars right off the bat, because that's what apparently, according to John, is required. If there's any other monies, there are grants or anything else, the bond bank requires it to be reflected in the bond that's requested. So those numbers are, the actual numbers are different, but we can't, they can't be determined until certain other things have happened in the process of organizing the architectural stuff itself. So there are lots of things that are going to be in kind, but we haven't been able to confirm them yet. There's a whole slew of other things that this foundation is working on to drive this cost down. And frankly, we hope that it's, it'd be nice if it was below $4 million, but we can't say that yet. So there's a real effort to do that.
I'm just looking at, based on where you're at, if you actually followed it, $200 a square foot, you'd be at 2.6 million, and then figuring, like, if you went 1% to 2% for an ICF, more for an ICF building, you're talking another 52K at 2%, and then you factor in a $500,000 furniture budget, which would bring you in right around 3.1, 3.2 max. So that's what I'm trying to, to get to, is if you, if you look at that, and you target where those numbers are, and what you're doing, it puts you at a pretty reasonable appropriation.
I, I don't, I don't understand all of the details of what are required for a public building to have. And I know that the sprinkling systems and all of those things, there's a whole slew of things that go with this that are required, part by law. And so the budgets reflect those requirements. And then what you do is you try and value engineer the building. Once you set the, you know, the overall standard, you try to, try to value engineer it, so that you bring all those costs down. You have to start with the full number to begin with, and then work backwards from there. And that's what they're trying to do, and I believe we will get there. So I just think you're, you're, you're looking at this from the perspective of a 4.5, and I don't believe that's what the bond is going to be for, but I can't say that yet.
And that's what I, really where I was trying to get to, is where, where are we, what are we trying to target as the ideal end date? Or what's... Or what's reasonable?
It's not a question of what's reasonable, what's doable. There's a difference between what's reasonable and what's doable. I mean, so, and I'm not an architect, and I'm not a building construction manager, so I can't give you a number. As I say, those two people who've been working on this, and there are things in the budget that we know are not going to be used in the end because they're going to be paid for, from the foundation money, for example, but they have to create a budget that includes it, even though it will be paid somewhere else. So that, for example, there's a furniture budget right now. Well, that furniture budget will probably disappear because it's one of the things that the foundation would pay for. There's a whole series of things like that that work down through this process, but you have to start at the top and work backwards, and everybody's working backwards at this point. Is that fair to say?
Fair to say.
Reasonable?
Like I said, I still think it's too high, but we've already had that conversation. I think there's a reasonable number in there. There's a balanced approach.
We're lucky to do that, and that's why, that's why all the commitment of this community to support this financially. I think that's a really important thing to understand, and to risk a half a million dollars that will reduce the cost of this building, which could easily happen if this bond is defeated a couple of times, it's just the end of it. And so it's rather to support the whole thing and really try and make this one bond a focused issue for this year, with all the effort that's being put into this with public relations and whatnot, makes to me a lot of sense financially, not just philosophically, if you will.
I think that's why I'm saying, let's figure out who we need to get involved to help sharpen the pencil, to get the number down to what we think is appropriate, reasonable, we'll have the full support.
What you think it should be and what it actually can be is a different matter, because, you know, you're not an architect, I'm not an architect, I know you've been involved in building developments, but you've been in a lot of industrial buildings and whatnot. I think these people have a lot of experience doing this stuff. And so as a consequence, I'm inclined to take the advice of experts who do this.
That's, we're gonna, I'm gonna call this right now, so.
I agree.
I think we have enough information. It's already been determined, we're going to get back to us with the information that's requested, and we'll have that to look at.
Well, I appreciate you having this.
It's starting to get heated, and I want to get it stopped.
Well, I don't mean to get heated, I talk fast.
No, no, it has nothing to do with it. And you will have the last comment.
Transparency. Sure, talk slower, talk slower.
My comment is on transparency. Last year, we couldn't reveal, we had a, on the TD Bank thing, we couldn't reveal, we had a three-minute paper. We get beat up deliberations, but we weren't transparent and stuff on it. We proposed no additional impact to the tax rate out of fund balance, and we had torn apart last year. People were trading cheaply out. We could have made it work, in my eyes, as a contractor. Would have been a brand-new place, but it could have worked. Technology and stuff.
Thank you. Anyway, I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
I will close public comment, this public comment. There will be another one in the end if you want to wait, Mr. Weeks.
I'm sorry.
If you'd like to wait, there's going to be another one here at the end.
I actually have another engagement, but thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. We have review of the minutes for December 3rd, 2:00 to 8:00.
Not ready yet.
Well, hold on there, one of the questions.
They're, I mean, they're available, they're not finished yet. And then I thought you had you signed the minutes you approved last week, so there are none.
So that comes next. So next is John's administrative scrutiny report.
The first item I have is setting what the printing costs will be for people who purchase large copies, two feet by three feet, off the brand-new printer. We've reviewed with Seaco's business machine what the actual cost is, and we've checked with some other places, Staples, the community of Dover, we worked with Seaco's business machine, and the recommendation is the board set the fee is $6 for black and white and $12 for colored prints.
Any discussion from the board? Select man there? Select person there? Okay.
By using different vendors and stuff, that fire off.
Any other comments? Mr. Hatt.
Are we also offering them an electronic transfer where we will send them the document electronically?
We hadn't talked that through, but there's, what was the?
The plan is any document that would be scanned would be made available on the website electronically. And Barbara's done a great job of any records, any digital records that exist, she has hosted on the website, so they'd be available not only to the person requesting them, but to everybody.
Okay. I just want to make sure that.
For free.
Yeah, that everything is getting uploaded or at least managed in a way that it is available. Thank you.
John, do you need us to approve?
Motion.
Yes, we need to approve these fees. I'll make the motion that we approve the $6 for black and white, $12 for color.
I'll second it.
Second it. Any further discussion?
I was gonna second pending that it said, that it said board instead of R.
Yeah. That was Shakespeare.
Bailey, aye?
Aye, aye.
Hardikov, aye?
Aye, aye.
Here you go, John.
Engagement letter for the town hall bond. Will the board authorize either myself or Jim and Bailey to sign that? I haven't gotten it yet, but I expect the only differences will be the dollar amount of the bond and the dollar amount that they charge us.
Discussion?
I'd like to table it, and we have better numbers up. As general comments from here tonight.
One comment, anything else? Select person Hardikov?
I would also like to see the actual figures before we sign that document next week.
Hey, John.
Yep. Okay. I'll take that if I consensus that it's tabled until next week.
Correct.
The town administrator job description for the next administrator was handed out. Does the board have any questions on that? Is there a motion to adopt it? Effective upon my retirement?
I read through it. I would make a motion to adopt with the very minor changes that you and Connor have proposed.
Yeah, effective upon, for the next administrator.
Effective for the next administrator for the town of Barrington.
We have motion and second. Any further discussion? Bailey, aye?
Aye, aye.
Hardikov, aye?
Aye, aye.
Motion carries. John?
The next one, the board had asked for more information on the proposed combined assessing and building code administrative assistant. And we have put together information. I think we've answered most of the questions that the board had. A suggestion had been made by myself and Connor that we combine two similar positions, two part-time into one full-time position. There was asked that we have a full-time equivalency analysis, so from 2013 to 2018, we actually added four tenths of a person, but basically, the, we added an assistant building inspector, which added 0.55 position. So that's the big change, and that was being paid, 60% of that is being paid for by building inspection fees because it's so busy in the building inspector's office. We did a town hall inventory review. Lynn is working on additional certification in HR, and she brought a form which we really liked that we distributed to everyone. We used it as an exit interview with Cheryl. We also gained information from everyone in town hall, not just the AAs, but what is included in the memo that you have on pages two and three, onto four, is a description of the three part-time AAs. The selectman secretary, Suzanne, the assessing secretary, which was Cheryl, the building administrative assistant, who is currently Amanda. And we looked at what combination or change would be, should we make. One option is to continue with three part-time employees along the same plan as what we currently have. A second option would be to combine the assessing and building inspection position with a part-time selectman secretary. The third would be to combine the selectman part-time secretary with the assessing part-time. There is a lot of overlap between those latter positions, but when you look at the database that they use and the functions that they serve, we felt that the best combination was to combine the building inspection AA with the assessing AA. We believe that will help with retention. It will help with availability of information right now. With two part-time positions, there are hours that are not being covered at town hall, so even though we have less total hours, we'll have more hours in the office covered because these will, this will be a full-time position. So we're asking for, and this goes along with what the tech committee and we've been discussing as far as streamlining operation at town hall. So for that recommendation, I'm making the recommendation that the board approve a job description for a full-time building inspection, assessing, administrative assistant. We've already shared the cost analysis. This will be an additional $7,500 for the annual cost over what the cost was before the recent retirement. So that's the recommendation.
Questions from the board?
No, I would just like to take a position that the technology committee has had no opinion on staffing levels or on the position of combining roles. We have strictly looked at it from a technology standpoint, not a position or a staffing.
Yeah, I don't know that. I'm sorry if I misrepresented that, but you're encouraging the, using electronics to reduce the amount of space and everything that would be used, and we wouldn't need to have, right now, we're keeping records in two different places.
Right. We're encouraging use of electronics to better utilize the staffing resources we have and also further reduce the storage and retention of documents, paper documents.
Yes.
Select person there?
I agree with John's recommendation, but I did talk to you, so, a part-time, maybe, I would like to discuss it non-public, the benefits of a part-time. Has nothing to do with the two full-time. This is totally different subject.
Yeah, we're not going to go into non-public personnel.
I'll take that into consideration. Select person Hardikov.
So, first of all, I really appreciated the five-year full-time equivalency report. The only hesitation I have with this, and I certainly understand that we're currently up against a 2% unemployment rate here in the state of New Hampshire, and that finding qualified people to do positions long-term is very difficult. I just need to note that for $7,500 more in cost, you are functioning at 68.9% of the productive hours you have from two part-timers. So there will have to be a lot of efficiency built into the combination of these two positions to offset both the increase and the rather large reduction in productive hours. So I hope that that happens based on what you have outlined in the position description. And I certainly feel like if, as leaders of this position, you can ensure that the productivity will increase based on the combination of the two positions, so that the 68.9% of productive hours in comparison to the prior positions is a good idea, then I would have to take your word on that as leaders of this position.
Select person Hatch.
Having just had the experience of having property appraised and personally, and this isn't the town hall, this is the people that you hire, and I won't get into names, but it is something that we have doubles on deeds. We have no deeds on deeds. It's, believe me, and we hired what I assume is an excellent lawyer. And I'm telling you, I think I've been paying the bill on some of those properties twice. Anyone can look at it. I'm happy to let anybody look at it, but there's about 13, 14 parcels of property, and believe me, they don't match. And I think Suzanne can speak that she's having fun with them.
Yeah. Some of these old deeds aren't confusing.
Yeah, but this is, we paid for a full valuation, and as I say, I've got 13 parcels of property there that do not match. It's one of those things, hopefully it's being straightened out. That's just a comment, but it's not the town hall that's did this. But you're crazy.
And the descriptions are really hard to follow and vague, too, so.
Yeah, but all you're going, all she went by, this attorney, all she went by was the description of the parcel that each piece, that's where, I don't know where we get suddenly to, some pieces, but anyway. That's my form right now, and I'm working on it, and hope I'm not paying more than three times, but, and it has, as I say, it has nothing to do with community. You better believe it, I'm gaining.
I'll sign your, I'll sign your paper.
Motion?
Yes. Dan, it was a question, Dan had a, did you still have, still have a statement to make?
No.
Okay. I'll accept the motion.
The motion is to add a full-time equivalent in replacement of two part-time equivalents?
Yes. Combine the two positions. I'm doing it for knowledge expert retention, that's all I got. Certainly not for fiduciary reasons.
I'll tell you, I really struggle with it from the standpoint of, as we get more effective from a technology standpoint, I don't know if it's really worth the combination.
Currently, it fits the bill right now, but later on, in years to come, you know, just maybe even a year, might be looking for a change. But right now, we're trying to take care of now.
Right.
And I want to say this to both of you, is that I agree with what you're saying, but, you know, two years from now, if we find out we can go back to a one-part-time individual, I would be, if I'm still here, I'd be willing, happy to do that.
But that never happens.
It does happen, it really has. Look what's happened down at the.
No, it has, it's happened twice since I've been on this board.
Yeah, look what's happened down at the highway department. Peter has cut back on some of the personnel there, so there's another example of it. So, I mean, it's there for us to look at, so. Does anybody have a motion for this, please?
Can I just, can I say something?
I will make an exception, please go ahead.
You're staying forever?
You have to remember that.
It's gonna cost you two months.
You're replacing two people who've got a lot of experience and can just know where to find information, and this is, there's gonna be a learning curve that, too. I mean, Cheryl had a lot of years.
I know.
And so do I. And we know where to go for information, we've seen it before, so it's not something that's gonna, they're gonna be able to do like Cheryl and I did.
That's why, even more of why going to one full-time person gives me heartburn.
Why?
Because you're taking all those years of experience, we're wishing you well with them off into retirement, and I do, I wish on. Hope you and Cheryl the best with it. But to consolidate it down to even less hours and.
Or one knowledge base.
Right.
Instead of three that share it, means that we have to help this employee stay healthy and is actively at work the whole time, and that you all do a great job in your leadership of frustrating other people.
That's why I really have.
But I get, I understand the retention issue. You can't do much about it in this type of economy.
And also, also, I want to just bring forward what we're talking about, how well paperwork, I also want to compliment Mrs. Hatch when she did her job there, and all the information she had right at her fingertips came forward. So when you have people that stay with you and move, it's part of the, excuse me.
Stuff just comes naturally a lot of times.
Right, that's what happened.
So I've put forth a motion to combine the position to a full-time one.
I'll second it.
Have a motion that was made, second it? Any further discussion?
A big one, too.
I do, too. Bailey, aye?
Aye, aye.
Hatch, aye?
Hardikov, aye with hesitation.
I can hear it.
Here, I would comment.
Thank you very much. John, it worked out well. I have to tell you, it's a good report. Thank you.
Just for information, the. Just for information, the FEMA assistant director, Aaron Paradise, indicated the town's going to be giving $30,000 hopefully before the end of the year, which would reimburse into maintenance costs this year.
I thought it was quartered 41 last, during the budget.
It's, we don't always hit everything we ask.
Yeah, when you write a grant, you get what you get.
Peter, go ahead.
That was the total spent. They don't reimburse the full amount, they reimburse, they did the bridge aid program, they reimburse
Well, excellent, he's curing the $30,000, Peter.
Thank you, Peter.
Suzanne?
I just had a comment to say thank you again to, I personally comment, thanked Aaron for that, but thank you publicly to Aaron for doing that work to get us reimbursed on that money.
Suzanne, you have anything else?
I have an eviction notice to be signed. Now, I don't know how much.
We may need to rethink that based on the letter we get today.
Is that non-public?
That'd be non-public reputation.
Can we table it until next week, or?
It's non-public.
Okay.
We'll bring it up in non-public.
Great.
Anything else, Suzanne?
Okay, and George just signed two private road agreements that just needed the chair, chair person's signature because there's no enlarging the footprint of the property.
All right, he's stuck with, all right, he's stuck with side two.
And then you're extending, you have the agreement to extend services for Joanne Smith, Stonehill Musical Solutions?
That's in the, yes.
And payroll manifest, there's two of them dated December 2nd, and vendor manifest dated December 6th. That's it.
Thank you very much. Moving on, does anybody have any old business? Saying that, I'll move on to new business. Cost for the copy, we've already taken care of that. We have the bond engagement letter for the town. Do you still want to postpone that? Or do you want to continue further discussion on that?
Sorry, would you just repeat what you said?
I tabled it.
Bond engagement letter for the town.
It was tabled.
Yeah, I think it's tabled.
Yeah, it's tabled next meeting.
So that's why I said, if you want to continue, you have anything else you want to talk about. Please understand what I say. If I don't say it clearly, ask me and I will say it again. Moving on, selectman's report.
At the conservation last Thursday, it was very knowledgeable. They did a whole breakdown on Amherst during one of their seminars they went to, Anne Melvin presented it, and a lot of information about their management and stuff, but that's part of their budget and stuff, and they spent a lot of money, it was one of their biggest budgets.
Okay, I didn't hear what you said.
Amherst Conservation.
Yeah.
Anne Melvin did a presentation about their holiday meeting.
Oh, and for Amherst?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, okay.
And it's part of their town budget and stuff, but I guess it's one of their biggest budgets, but it's like, the department has everything. But a lot of information, shared a lot of information, so I told her to bring it to the land use. So we didn't get some ideas from it, not a copy, but get some ideas, and then Charlie Mariano of Forrester has come to the 20th to talk about Tambozy property. That's it.
And I think they canceled their first meeting in January.
As of right now, yes.
Select person Harkov?
There hasn't been a department meeting.
We have, our hearing was canceled, we will have nothing until probably January.
Select person there?
Quick look of money, the planning board just had a corrective deed from a subdivision, corrective subdivision in 9.6 percent. Beyond that, it was working on solar zoning regulation, and that was the extent of the planning board.
I don't have any report. Say anything in public comment? Saying that, I'll move to non-public.
You only give me three minutes, nobody else got an hour.
You.
Yeah, but we're starting to subtract it from all the time, you know.
One and a half, this time.
Everybody's a comedian on this floor.
Going back to budget questions, last week, select person Harkov asked about Warren Article. This is just for information purposes, just like this paperwork I gave you tonight, I wasn't necessarily asking for. Opinion, I, we, the communication, we met with our radio vendor today, we won't have any solid numbers till after the first of the year, but to give you folks a heads-up, portable radios run anywhere from $2,500 to $4,000 each. I have somewhere in the neighborhood of 40 of them. I have somewhere in the neighborhood of eight or nine mobile radios, and they're probably $4,000 each, so you're going to spend about $150,000 on a radio upgrade, as well as the communication upgrade that we're working on. I don't have any idea what the numbers are. We gave this board a number, a number of years ago, about a quarter of a million dollars, and we're very far off. So to answer that question, I think you've got to put the money into that account. The other thing, the, when we look at, we understand this $400 and somewhat thousand dollars in the truck capital reserve. For a point of clarification, we put a committee together, we expect to come to this board in '19 to replace a tanker early 2020, that'll leave about $350,000 is my best guess, that'll leave somewhere in the area of $120,000 to $150,000 in that account. The next big truck that's online that we replace six years from now, I mean, seven or eight years from now, today's dollars, it's a $600,000 truck, today's dollars. So your best guess what it's going to be six or seven years from now? Again, if we, if we reduce the money we put away in a truck now, it only forces us to ask for 100 or more down the road. The plan we have is to try to put 50,000 or 60,000 a year away and be pretty close to where we need to be in seven or eight years when it's time to replace the truck. Thank you.
I have a quick question, do you have those items listed on the CIP?
Yes, we do.
Okay.
I have a quick question. Is that something, like you talk about looking at a new tanker in the next couple of years, is that something we can buy a cabin chassis and retro the existing body off of the current truck onto a new cabin chassis?
That's not necessarily off the table at this point.
Thank you.
Mr.?
Comment on that? Comment on Andy. For the newer trucks, frame size is up, they swap arounds up, so you would have to buy a chassis that's compatible. And you left, they're all, they're all set standard and wooden now, today.
I keep seeing senior more comments, we'll move on, I need to vote to move to non-public session, more personnel reputation and legal.
Make a motion to go into non-public for personnel reputation and
I'll second it. Bailey, aye?
Aye, aye.
And we will not be coming back to public comment, I mean, public meeting.
Carticoff, aye?
Not for discussion, that's correct, we're just going to combine it, Jerry.